...and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett. We could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. To get started here, approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, visitors. Tonight, I believe we've got four visitors. We'll take, Ms. Michaels has them in order, I guess, as you file them with her. I'd like to just remind everybody that we allow three minutes. And Ms. Marshall, right here on the front row by Ms. Michaels, controls the timer and all that. So if she, when she tells you it's time to wind it down, I appreciate it if you do that. So first one we got up is Ms. Lisa Moore.
Hi, good evening. Am I ready? All of you know me, of course. It's been a few months since you've seen me. I'm Lisa Moore, Christiana, Tennessee. The last time, I think, seven months ago, that I first came to speak to you, we were, of course, talking about textbooks, and that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. All of you, of course, very familiar with what we went through with the social studies book, the world history book we had so much concern about. The way we left it, basically, I guess, a number of months ago was that the school board, the board didn't feel it necessary to remove that book from the school. And then, basically, you guys advised us to go to the state that the new social studies books were coming up for review. And just so all of you know, I have not been sitting at home knitting for the past six months, even though you haven't seen me here. The books came up for review, the public review period came up, and we pulled together a group of hundreds of parents, grandparents, educators, citizens across the state who helped us read these social studies textbooks. There's seventy-four of them. Of course, social studies covers the areas of history, both U.S., world, as well as Tennessee history. And it also covers the politics, psychology, it's wide range of books. All of you had mentioned to us at that time that you felt like we needed to take it up with the state, since they would be the ones selecting the list of books. So that's exactly what we did. We've been to every state textbook commission meeting over the past four months. The last meeting, the books, by the way, the reviews that came back, there are none of them, but maybe a handful that we feel acceptable to be in our children's classrooms. The history books are more abhorrent than the one that we talked about seven months ago. They're worse. And I don't have detail to go into all of it tonight, but for the most part, they're unacceptable. We got up and spoke and gave a public presentation to the state textbook commission at the last two meetings. They heard us. At the last meeting, they made a motion, and asked for a motion, to approve the list of books. And there was not a peep. No sound in the room. They called for a second motion. Nobody. None of the commissioners were even willing to make a motion after everything we presented and showed them to approve that list of books. I thought that spoke pretty loud volumes. Unfortunately, today, they did approve them. Dr. Jason Robinson got up and said to the publishers that they should be ashamed of themselves, and he didn't know how they were going to sleep at night putting these textbooks into our kids' classrooms. The vote was three to two. They took out one book to appease us. It was a psychology book. Bottom line, they pushed it back to you guys at the local level. We've got a lot of work to do. I know you've all heard the phrase, "Behind an eight ball." We are behind an eight ball. And you're going to hear from several other folks tonight that'll go into a little bit more detail about it.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, we've got Ms. Jackie Archer.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. Lisa, just let you know about our morning that we spent at the commission meeting in Nashville. So I won't go over that. There seemed to be a real reluctance to approve the slate of textbooks. And after the small concession of the one psychology book, they were approved by a vote of only three to two, with four commissioners not even present. The prevailing logic was that they could be rejected at the district level. That's your level. One fact that was made clear, listening to Ms. Barton, who is, I'm not sure what her exact title is, but she's with the curriculum with the TDOE. And the commissioners, in their narrative, was that the books were reviewed not for content, but for adherence to state standards. They just checked the boxes. Well, we, on the other hand, reviewed all of the books for truth, accuracy, and the completeness of all the subjects, whether both sides of every issue were covered. And they were not. I've been corresponding with Mr. Philip Kilgore, the director of the charter school, K-12 charter school of Hillsdale College. I think you're probably all familiar with Hillsdale College in Michigan. And they have their, they hire their teachers on the basis of subject matter mastery and do not rely on textbooks that much. What I discovered in this process of reviewing these books up at MTSU, they have all the material at MTSU, is that with the plethora of supplemental material that came along with these books for the teachers, that teachers don't really even have to be educated to teach these classes. They simply use the material and do what they're directed. So they're just taking directions. And those directions, I fear, are coming from way up high, and they leave ample opportunity to affect the ideological bias. Because they don't, the teachers don't have to think for themselves anymore, unless they elect to. And we hope that they do. There's little taught about our founders and the Constitution in these books, and that is a travesty. They are littered with American democracy. Well, we are not a democracy. And that has to be made clear. We are not a democracy. We are a constitutional republic, and every law that's passed and everything that we do has to refer back to that Constitution. So I propose that you people put into place required courses on the Constitution. Until it is understood completely, we will be vulnerable to those that disdain it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. Next, we've got Ms. Pam King.
My name's Pam King, and I live in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. We have somehow gotten a misunderstanding about who is actually responsible for adopting the books. This is a copy of the Tennessee Annotated Code that I've given you, which I know you have, Noel. Regarding Title 49, which is Education, Chapter Six, Elementary and Secondary Education, Part 22 Textbooks, Listing of Approved Textbooks, it is the duty of the commission to prepare a list of standard editions of textbooks for approval by the State Board of Education for use in the public schools. At least four books in each subject and grade shall be listed. If available and of sufficient merit to warrant being listed, the list shall be published in accordance with the rules and regulations, policies and procedures of the State Publication Committee. The commission has the authority to recommend to the State Board of Education which textbooks may be added to the list for adoption. The commission also has the authority to recommend to the State Board of Education any textbook that may be removed from the list for adoption if the commission finds that the book contains subversive material or information, provided that the publisher of the book has been given written notice by the secretary of the commission not less than thirty days prior to the meeting of that recommended-for-removal book to the board will be considered by the commission. In recommending textbooks for use in economics or business-oriented courses or programs, the commission should include at least one textbook written, illustrated, and exemplified in such a manner as to facilitate comprehension by all students, including those of disadvantaged socioeconomic circumstances and culturally different backgrounds. In recommending textbooks for use in social studies, Tennessee history, American history, or any related subject, the commission shall strive to recommend textbooks that accurately and comprehensively portray the full range of diversity and achievement of racial and ethnic minorities, as well as the role and importance of religion in history. Upon approval by the State Board of Education, the commission shall publish the list of textbooks for use in the schools of this state, no later than February 1st of any year, when listings are made or there are changes. I'm going to skip down here because I want to get the rest of this. Adoption of textbooks by the local board, that's Section 2207. The local boards of education are authorized and required to adopt textbooks to be used in the public schools of their school districts from the list of textbooks listed for adoption by the commission. The adopt, that's end of my time. There's more on there. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Scott Moore.
My name is Scott Moore. I'm a resident of Christiana, Tennessee. You're familiar with my wife for life, Lisa Moore, who I'm very proud of, the efforts that she's put in on this. I would like to believe that all of you are concerned about our children's education. Otherwise, you wouldn't be doing what you're doing. Safe to say that. So I'd like to wrap up today with some very specific questions and comments. And time is of the essence, as you know, okay? We would like to request a special meeting at your convenience to discuss this in a much greater detail than the three minutes that were allowed at this meeting. So we would like to get a commitment from you today that you would be willing to do that. We've done the legwork. We have reviewed all seventy-four of these textbooks. And that doesn't come just like that. It's taken a lot of effort. We do know there are books out there that we think would be more acceptable than the books that are under review at this point, that have been accepted. So we would like to ask that you, more or less, put your money where your mouth is, because you said you wanted our input. As far as, will you be willing to set up a meeting so that we can present more facts to you so that you can make more of an informed decision about this? So I'm officially requesting a meeting of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. What we'll do from here, I'm going to save any comments from not only the board, but from Mr. Oldham, to the general discussion. And we'll address, any board members have any comments to make, we'll address them at that time. Number seven, Mr. Oldham.
Number seven is the zone exemption appeal. Apparently, Johnson requested a zone exemption for assigned to attend Stewart's Creek Middle School instead of Laverne Middle School. The zone exemption request has been denied previously because of Cisco classes that Stewart's Creek Middle School are at capacity and cannot accept zone exemptions pursuant to school board policy. And what happened, if you remember, there was a, we actually informed of an incorrect date in the communication with her. So it was our mistake of the date of the appeal. But she has now, and so we voted that night to deny, you know, the appeal. So since that time, she has withdrawn her request for a change. So in order to correct this motion, the recommended approval of the motion is to rescind the action taken on October 3rd, 2013, board meeting, to deny the zone exemption request.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You do spotlight.
We did not do the spotlight, did we? We have a spotlight tonight. And Ms. Jenna Stetson, and James, are you also assisting with that? Delighted to see some of the things that we're doing for grant writing that we've done with Coordinated School Health, so. Ms. Stetson, the floor is yours.
I run the coordinated school health program, so I'm completely funded by grant from the state. So in order to do my job, I have to write additional grants to pay for all other things that I'm doing at the schools. This is, I took this position three years ago. My first year, I raised almost one hundred and eighteen thousand. Second year, one hundred and thirty-five. This year, I'm up to sixty-five thousand, but I have a long way to go. I should be able to double that. Usually, I can get around one hundred and twenty, so. So my total to this point, three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred in grants that I've raised so far. I won't go through all of them. These are some of the major grants. Play Sixteen and Tennessee Titans, they give us twenty-five thousand dollars for fitness grant programs in our school. It's a way for our PE teachers to track our students and give them a grade based on real tests. It's not just watching them and saying, "Oh, they look like they're putting out the effort." It's an actual real way to test them and track it throughout the years. Richard Siegel Foundation pays for several of our walking tracks, which I'm going to show you in a minute. MTSU Concrete Program has helped us quite a bit. Their students help pour the traps that we have, and they save us thousands of dollars in labor. So students actually come over and do that work. I won't go through the rest, but those are just some of our major donors and some of you have given us the larger grants. I'm going to show you a few pictures of what the grant money has gone towards. The first year, we put the track in at Blackman. You can see the kids running around. The PE teachers use this almost every day. The teachers can use it whenever they like. And if kids are getting restless and they need to wake up their brains, they take them out, walk them around a few times, and they're ready to learn. Because research has proven that, once you're up and active, your brain's healthy, you start firing, and you're able to absorb what you're learning better. So that's worked really well at Blackman. This is a fitness course. It's outdoor at Daniel McKee. They don't have a gym there, so I worked with their principal to get this installed, and they use this almost every day. And it's been really beneficial at that school. This is the track at Rock Springs Elementary. A lot of the teachers there take their kids out after lunch every day. So I know if you're like me after lunch, come back and sit down, and you're tired. So it's really good for the kids to do a few laps, wake them up, and they're ready to go after lunch. McFadden is the one on the left. Their PE teacher actually helped me write some grants to get that one put in. Laverne Lake just went in the end of last year, and it's, most of them are right off the gym, so it's easy access for the PE teachers to use. And if you'll notice, at all of the tracks we put in, whoever gives us grant money, we always put a sign up. It's a way to say thank you, let the community know who gave money for that track. So that one went in at Cedar Grove last spring. On the top left-hand, you'll see the Fitness Center at Stewart's Creek Middle. When Middle Tennessee Medical Center's Wellness Center moved to their new facility, they were getting rid of all their old equipment. So I asked them what they were going to do with it. They were going to sell it, give it away. So they gave it to me. So we were able to put it in at Stewart's Creek Middle. So now they have a PE class and they have a fitness class. The bikes at the bottom, those are Trek Bikes. And I wrote a grant to get twenty of those. And so Smarter Middle has a bike club. Their health teacher takes twenty kids out every Tuesday and Thursday, and they go and ride their bikes for about an hour. This is Laverne Primary, and we funded a fruit and vegetable program. So two days a week, they got a new fruit or vegetable, and the teachers would teach them what it is, how it's healthy for your body. They got to taste it, and at the end of the year, we did celebrations. They could eat some of the things they tasted throughout the year. That was really successful. So far, we've had ten tracks completed, well, we will after the end of this year. So we had Blackman, McFadden, Rock Springs, my first year. We were able to put four more in last year. Buchanan Elementary's track is going in. It started today. Stewart's Creek should probably go in next week, and then Thurman Francis will be complete by Christmas.
Some of the tracks were made out, too.
They're made of pervy's concrete, if that makes sense, because the concrete students help us make those. And what's unique about that is it's porous, so there's holes in it, so the water goes straight through it. So there's no excuse to not go out. It's not dangerous after it rains. It's going to soak right through, so it's always safe to get out there walking. It's not going to freeze, and there's not going to be puddles.
Ms. Oldham asked Jenna and I to talk about some of the grants that have come in this year, and she's talked about what she's done with Coordinated School Health. I wanted to talk a little about specifically a couple of groups that have helped us. Could you show us the next one, though? Richard Siegel Foundation, you guys probably know the history of it, but I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Siegel, he passed away about a decade ago. He left some land for the school systems and for the city to use, to build parks and schools. First United Methodist Church was built on the land, so was, you know, of course, our Siegel School, Siegel Park, Richard Siegel Park. He also, with the church, he made their trustees board the governing body for the Siegel Foundation. I actually served on that board, but when we come to, when we come to school decisions, I have to abstain from that, of course, if I have a conflict. But that trustees board oversees the money that, and basically, he just wants them, he wanted the board to give away money every year. The mission of the foundation is to provide scholarships for local high school seniors and provide annual grants to improve educational and recreational opportunities for the community. And Rutherford County Schools and our students have greatly benefited from this foundation. They literally give us tens of thousands of dollars every year. Ms. Stetson has received several grants from them. This year, the Rutherford County Schools Clothing Charity Fund received sixty-one hundred. Smyrna High School received ten thousand for their locker room improvements. The baseball dugouts at Stewart's Creek, they received partial funding for that project. And then Coordinated School Health received about twenty-four thousand. Last year, you could see those four programs that received money. So the total of the first year was forty-seven thousand, and for the last year was forty thousand, nearly forty-one thousand that we received from that organization. And we are, we've been applying for grants in both the recreational category and the education category. And if you look at the actual awards they're giving, the school system is receiving most of those funds every year. And a lot of our seniors are also benefiting every year from scholarships for college. Now, I want to talk a little about the Clothing Charity Fund. This is something that has had some funding issues come up. The purpose of the Clothing Fund, I'm not sure if you guys know what that is. It's something the school district runs. It's kind of a separate nonprofit to help students who need clothing. But really, it's not only about providing clothing. It's also about providing dignity and self-esteem for at-risk students. The number-one thing that the fund bought last year was underwear and socks for children. Those are the number-one things. So we're talking about the basic necessities for clothing in most cases. The Clothing Fund is maintained and administered by the attendance department. Teachers at the schools make referrals to the program based on student observation. So if they notice that a student needs clothing, they can make a referral to the program. And then the attendance teachers take the students shopping at Target, which we have a partnership with them. They give us five percent off, and of course, it's tax-free. They also use our purchase system, which is very helpful. All RCS employees volunteer their time, which means a hundred percent of the funds go back into the program and benefit students directly. The funding for the program, as I said, is a challenge. For starters, we lost seven thousand dollars in funds for the program this year from United Way. And the main reason for that is the grant funds in United Way, it's just becoming more and more competitive. Our community is growing. There are a lot of agencies who need money. And so it's just getting very competitive for those funds. The program typically runs out of funds each year in October. Brenda Jarman sent out an email a couple of weeks ago that says we have already ran out of funding for the program this year. They maintain a small portion just for emergency situations, but ninety-five percent of the funding has already been spent this year. Ms. Oldham, this year, has allowed me to spend some time working with our attendance department to help them find some additional funding sources and community partners. And so far, we have secured sixty-one hundred from the Siegel Foundation. In addition, Mr. Andy Womack has worked with me to secure some additional funding, forty-five hundred for some private donors. And we have a few other private donations that are coming in. We're looking for others. So if you know of groups that are looking for outreach efforts or how to get involved, let me know, and we'll approach them. We have a few other donors who have given in the past who dropped off that we're trying to reconnect with. We're also hoping to bring in some additional community partners, like other clothing stores, that maybe will donate some clothing at a discounted rate so we can use that money more efficiently. But like I said, the program provides much more than clothing. It provides dignity and confidence. If you're not wearing clean underwear and socks, it's going to be really hard for you to focus on your education. And that's really what the program's for. It also acts as a doorway a lot of times for our attendance department, if they're having trouble with a family coming to school for truancy, things like that. A lot of times, there are other issues going on. And sometimes, if you can come in and say, "Let's get some clothes for these kids first," that kind of builds a rapport with the family and helps them get back on track. You guys have any questions for either of us?
The clothing has been in place for a long time, even back when I was in attendance. And I have done some of that shopping myself when I was in attendance, where we meet the families over there and go through and try on the clothing and that sort of thing that we do. So just really hats off again to our attendance people who are donating so much time to meet families and do that. And again, it's basics. The amount, we used to kind of look at some. We hold it to probably not much more than a hundred dollars for a student. If you buy jeans and a top and a pair of shoes and underwear and all that, very quickly, you can begin to approach that amount. Or a coat in certain seasons of the year that you do that. A lot of these children have never had new clothing much in many years of their life. And so it's so interesting to watch the faces and see those kids when they got a brand-new pair of jeans that was not a hand-me-down or something from somebody else. So it's a great opportunity to see some good that we're doing for others, thanks to all the partners we're seeing here. Several people in our central office here, when they make their United Way donation, where you can specify a part of your donation, very often, teachers in the schools and all will also specify a part of their donation to go to the charity fund. Not unusual at all.
Anybody else? We sure appreciate it. Thank you. Number nine, Mr. Oldham.
Number nine is the Annual Policy Manual Review. And of course, as part of a process, we review the entire manual each year. And this is Section Three, Support Services. And its policy, 3.100, is the first one. It goes all the way through to 300, to the last policy, which is 3.601, the Student Insurance Program. So I guess we're looking at if anyone has one they need to pick out and place on for the policy committee.
I'll just make mention that we, the next policy meeting is November 4th. So that's already scheduled. And so if you have any questions regarding any of these, just bring them up at that time. Number 10, Mr. Oldham.
Number 10 is a differentiated pay plan, for information only. For those of you in the audience and people that may be watching on television, we spent probably forty-five minutes or a little more last night looking at the guidelines associated with this. So I have a quick summary. You have a copy of that for our audience and people that may have only tuned in tonight. Let me kind of read that, kind of summarize what we did. The Tennessee Legislature and the State Board of Education have mandated that all public school systems in Tennessee must implement a differentiated pay plan beginning with the 2014-15 school year. One of the primary guiding principles is that, "And across-the-board pay increase based solely on years of experience or educational attainment, or one that provides additional compensation for additional work, shall not meet the requirements of the differentiated pay plan." So that's been over the many decades. That's kind of been the process. The state was based on degree and experience. And so that alone would not work. You have to change it. With the new plan, no presently-employed teacher will earn less than what they are currently making, nor will new teachers make less than the current base pay. The plan cannot come at the expense of a competitive base salary and should be revenue-neutral. So one of the things that we kind of struggle with there might be the revenue-neutral piece, because the state's not promising to provide additional funds for the differentiated pay plan. Last night, we discussed some of the suggested changes that qualify for meeting the requirements of this law. Some of the things that the state is throwing out that we could include in our differentiated pay plan, and we do not have one devised at this time. It'll be a process for us. You can reward teachers in high-need schools. We talked about that last night. Could be demographic, could be academic. Providing bonuses for teachers being recruited for high-need subjects where there is a shortage of applicants. There would be assigning bonus, and we have done that in some subjects for several years. Number three, additional compensation for additional responsibilities that enhance the system's ability to meet required annual measurable objectives under the No Child Left Behind waiver. So that, again, is where you change people's responsibility for something to meet those AMO goals. Four, salary adjustments or bonuses for teachers with higher teacher effectiveness scores. We talked about last night, there's really two- We talked about last night, there's really two of those. One comes from the value-added system, the other one from, that is a composite of the value-added plus principals evaluation. That's the whole composite effectiveness score. There's another, some districts are doing incorporating financial incentives for staff attendance. Or you can also do higher beginning salaries to remain competitive and to attract a high-caliber of new teachers. And we talked about that, that some districts are beginning to look at that. Our system's differentiated pay plan team provided the board with the state guidelines last evening, and we'll be presenting the same guidelines to a teacher representative from each school tomorrow to seek additional input. So we'll be, a teacher advisory committee, which will be representative of each school, will be here tomorrow afternoon. And we'll basically show them and try to answer questions, you know, the, the same way that you, what you saw last night. So that's tomorrow afternoon here at three-thirty. We have a follow-up session with system administrators for additional input. Then we may wait till we get a little further in the plan, because they will also see what the teachers come back with tomorrow from theirs. I also contacted the chairperson of the Commission's Health and Education Committee and asked if they would like a short presentation on the guideline. You know, typically, you know, we don't want to keep anybody in the dark, this is all transparent as we're working with this, but, you know, any funding things that we have to include in our budget, or if they get telephone calls or that sort of thing, what is this? So I think this is an information piece that we've offered to them if they choose to allow us to do that. So, and I, and I think they may do that. And also, to everyone in the audience and board, is also scheduling an additional work session for consideration of this, this plan. So we'll be working on that. Probably our target goal, that we're gonna need something in by sometime in January, very likely, to come up with a plan for approval. And we kind of need it in some timeframe like that because Jeff has to, we start working on our budget for next year. He actually told me this week he'd already begun working on next year's, but some, but by January, February, you have to have a pretty good idea of what's gonna be in your budget, you know, so that you can place the numbers in. So that's kind of a summary of, I think, what we did last night and where we plan to go.
Don't you have to have this, when you have to have this file with the state?
Um, it, it kind of depends on what changes we make. There's a couple of dates, one in there, but primarily, it's January. And I don't know the exact date in January at this time. Twenty, thirty, thirty-first of January.
Anybody else? Mr. Halliday?
There were three things that, as Mr. Odom summarized, that, that came to my mind of our discussion yesterday and after the meeting last night. I don't know if they were watching on TV, but I've talked to several educators that were in touch with me before I got done last night. And one of the issues was the state has said that the state is removing increases for degrees above masters and step raises above eleven years. The, that comes across sometimes as being there's no increased pay for advanced degrees. I thought it was important to, to clarify advanced degrees above masters. And so the masters will still have, you know, a, a certain step increase, but beyond that is what is, is in question and in transition. And so when I was able to express that, there was some, some confidence there. The other thing that we talked about last night was that because this is such a complex and somewhat delicate process, we may choose to kind of phase this in. And it may take some time to get the full impact of this. And so as we consider this, both as a board and as a system, it, it'd be important to think about the fact that it may not all fall in, in one, in one absolute step. The last thing was, and I raised it last night, but it was so important that I want to say it again tonight. The state of Tennessee has put forward a statement that says, "We are to increase retention of, of our most effective teachers and increase attrition of our least effective teachers." And I said last night, I was just uncomfortable with the statement. It's not our statement, it's the state of Tennessee. But it is important in Rutherford County that we make every teacher an effective teacher. And our professional learning communities and our commitment to training are certainly in that direction. And as a board member, I want to make sure that tonight, again, we say that we are interested in the success of every teacher and not this statement of increased attrition. There may be a portion of that that occurs, but that is not the intent of the Rutherford County School Board.
Mr. Flaherty?
I'm still trying to wrap my brain around a mandate that, where the governor is saying that it's Tennessee to be the, you know, the fastest-growing, best-paying education system in the nation, but we're looking at a mandate that talks about being revenue-neutral. And if you're talking about, you know, advancing your best teachers and the attrition of the least effective, you know, that's all, that's not revenue-neutral. And I'm, I'm still a little perplexed by, by the mandate. I guess I'll just have to continue to study it and, and figure out where the, where the state is actually heading. But it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me at this point to use those statements in, in that kind of mandate. So that's an opinion.
Anybody else? Mr. Tuck?
I shared this information with my wife last night, and she said, "I got a little homework for her." Had her this little sheet of paper. For those that might not know, she's retired also, has thirty-six years as kindergarten teacher. My background is mainly at the high school level, hers is kindergarten level. You won't be surprised that she and I view it a lot different kind of way. So I think that's one of the real challenges you have here, is recognizing that the primary school way of looking at how things should be done as compared to. Because to, at the primary level, that, the idea that we would, you would go out there and pay more for math and chemistry teachers, a little hard for them to swallow, recognizing that that takes away what's there. And, you know, I'll say this, I'm a high school guy, but at the same time, I, I've long been an advocate that if you don't get it in case or two, it's not gonna happen at the high school level. So we've got to get our money there at that level. I mean, I think that's where best teaching has to be done. And that's where we have to, and I think our, a lot of things we do as far as pupil teacher ratio and, and funding, it reflects that. But I, I, I think it's a real challenge. And we, we just had a good time with, with whatever, because she's about opposite of the way I would probably recognize it.
I would like to be present for that conversation.
Right by any time we have.
I appreciate your understanding of how, of the difficulty of this task before us and another hundred and thirty-plus districts in Tennessee that are trying to accomplish this. The three that I named last night that have done something like this, did it with additional funds that was from a grant proposal. I'm not sure exactly how they sustain that over the long term, you know, but that, that remains to be seen, I guess.
Have we already seen this incorporated in other states? Is it being effective?
You know, I think, I think it's a, it's a kind of a move in general that, some, and some of it's from the business community and other things too, that people earn their pay or whatever it is. There's several issues, and of course, they're basing much of it on the T-WoS score or the Teacher Effect Score. Because as I mentioned last night, there's only roughly about half the teachers take an exam that will give them an effect score. So one of the big issues for that, how do you, how do you apply that equitably across the whole spectrum of teachers, when roughly half of them are not even taking an assessment that lets them do that? And then how, how do you quantify that? Is that a good measure of, of their effectiveness? You know, that's still up for debate too. And I, and I think you'll see during the legislature this year and some other discussions, you're, you're gonna see more talk about this. But there's, there's also some confusion. There's another thing going on at the same time. And that is, there was another proposal that the State Board of Education approved on one, one reading, the first reading, that licensure of teachers is also gonna be tied to effectiveness scores. And again, that's only been done on first readings. So there'll be a process of the State Board over the next few weeks going through their three readings. But this one mandating the differentiated pay plan has been through both the legislature and with the State Board. And we've got referencing the PowerPoint of a state law and the State Board. And so that one's already been completed, that, that's done. What's up the debate now is what effect all of this teacher effect now has on teacher licensure. And that's still a debate that's ongoing at this time in Tennessee. It's, it's a tough time to be a teacher in Tennessee. I'll tell you, there's just a tremendous amount of expectation that's going on. And Tennessee, though, if you remember, some of the reports had some of the most improved graduation rates over the last several years, you know? Other states are now looking to us to see how we're accomplishing the gains and all. Our teachers are extremely, and administrators are extremely focused. And they absolutely want the students to achieve a, as high as they possibly can. We do not turn anyone away. We, anybody that comes and enrolls in a public school, we take those students and through our professional learning communities, through our tracking and the response to intervention that's coming down the road with a quicker response to, to those intervention pieces when somebody is behind. I think we're gonna see progress, you know? I mean, I think we'll continue to do that. Again, will it be at, at the rate they're expecting? I don't know. I, I will say this tonight, in, in a year from now, when the Common Core assessments comes, I'll be extremely surprised if the proficiency numbers do not drop. Because every time I've seen a, a new test come online, or I have seen a new norming of a test, in the education world, we call it the J-curve drop, because it's brand-new to everybody. And to the teachers and all, but as soon as kind of teachers see structures of tests and you understand those things, then, then it starts picking up again and people begin to align more the instruction that's associated with that. So I think Tennessee's goal, and they have trained, is it thirty thousand teachers themselves or some of that? That's the kind of figure that's going around on Common Core and some other things. There's been some very good training in reading and math that's been done by the state. So I think even though the state as a whole, Kentucky dropped by almost fifty percent in their first year that they gave a Common Core Assessment Hall on Common Core. So I think you'll see a drop. I just think it's a very good possibility that Tennessee this time, when, when you've got forty-something states gonna be giving the test, you know, I think our relative placement, this time around, may not be forty-fifth or something like that. We may, I, I wouldn't say we'd be the top, but I, I think there's been enough invested that we should look better, I think, in the national comparison. In the past, you couldn't do a national comparison anyway, because everybody had different assessments and different tests, that sort of thing. So the challenges are out there.
Mr. Odom, when the Tennessee Diploma Project kicked in, I, I know you were Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum at that time. I don't recall with the preparation that you, Mr. Gill, and the rest of the central office, I don't remember Rutherford County taking a drastic fall. I, I know some of the other districts did, but from what I recall, y'all had prepared our people well enough that I, I don't remember if, if there was much of a lowering, but it seemed like we came up very quickly.
Did return quickly. If you remember, the National Chamber of Commerce, something gave Tennessee an Alpha Truth in Advertising, and what they compare it to is the NATE test, National Assessment of Education Progress. And they compare a test all over the country to the NATE assessment. Well, the NATE assessment's not aligned to any state's standards, nor is it aligned to the Common Core, but everything's compared to it. So if you're reporting in your state that you're eighty-five percent proficient, your students are eighty-five percent, and the NATE comes back forty-five percent, then that's, that was when they said it was the Liker Truth in Advertising. And if you remember, actually, it was Governor Phil Bretison that addressed that at a time and came to the State Board and said, "We're gonna make our standards tougher." And so Tennessee went through a process of realigning and, and creating new standards for math and English Language Arts, basically is what they did. And the first year that test was given, there was a drop. And, and in fact, in some circles now, Massachusetts is kind of recognized as the toughest standards in the nation. I mean, they, they kind of probably have earned that over time. But there are a number of people now in the testing world that say Tennessee may very well have the second toughest standards in the, in the country at this time. But our teachers are working extremely hard and, and the scores are going up. But what I'm saying is, next year, that goes out, those standards go out, and we have the new standards, at least for two subjects, the reading, language arts, and mathematics. The old standards stay in place for science and social studies because that's not a part of the Common Core.
Mr. Tuck?
And I think it's worth saying, it doesn't mean our children are learning less at all. It just means the assessment, very much like in athletic world, you play your six easiest games the first part of the year, and you're six-and-oh. Play your seven, six toughest teams at the end of the season, and you lose six straight. It didn't get worse, the competition just got better. And I think that's what we're looking at as far as the assessment here, is our kids aren't learning less, they're learning more. But the assessment model changes that a good bit, and it, it, it can be very confusing to the general public, for sure.
Many of you may remember the night that they came and did a presentation to us, somebody from the state, and gave your board, this board, a third-grade maths problem to solve. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And if you don't believe the standards, if you don't believe the standards are tougher, just, just ask any parent that's helping their child do homework at home now. And they're gonna tell you, "Boy, I didn't not do this in this grade. I didn't see that." So, I mean, there's no question that the standards are tougher and the expectations are higher, again, but we'll survive this, and I think we'll come out better on the other end. But the Diploma Project was college or career-ready. And our, one of this board's objectives for us has been all along, that you very much support career and technical education for students, you know, also. So we worked very hard at also making those students college and career-ready. Tomorrow, the Chamber of Commerce is, has another, and I'll be going to that for the labor and workforce development. And you already know about the Megatronics program that's going on this year. I heard another report on that this week. Actually, at, at the Mottlo, when the ribbon cutting, when they did that, the gentleman from, from Bridgestone talked about, that class of students is doing extremely well. They are surprised how well they're doing. And that was mostly students from Oakland. And in fact, they're trying to create, we've got to have our counselors now trying to recruit some additional students to enter the program, maybe in January. This really does help our businesses here, the Nissans, the Bridgestones and those. They're going out of state looking for people with these skills, and they're paying very strong salaries for that. We're in the process of working with the state of Tennessee, you know, about the new train, the state training facility that is, that is to be built across from the Nissan plant. We're working on changing some of the curriculum in our high schools now in an alignment that will allow our students to take the high school courses, and they will have a set number of hours, several hundred to maybe a thousand or more, to complete their credentials, you know, to go to the Tennessee State Trade and then be certified. We already have in our, in CTE now in Rutherford County, that students can go through and, and receive, if they'll take the national test, their certification for automobile trade, for some of those in the computer fields and all, some of that training that we offer, that students can do it. So we've been working on this for a number of years. So when I talk academic, I don't want to just say just the students that might be going to college, because just within the last few months with these Megatronics, now what we're seeing is happening there, Mottlo has stepped up. The kids that go through this and they can, by doing this, they're gonna get credit for college. And then MTSU has just been approved for a four-year degree, you know? That will also, is really kind of what we used to call, it's an engineering, it's kind of an industrial engineering-type degree. So these kids, even though some of them are career and technical, the skills they're picking up and the path that's being designed for them, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and thanks to some of our businesses here in Rutherford County, they're spot, they're funding the, the scholarships for these kids at no cost to them. You heard about Laverne High, the, the scholarships being provided, as I noticed, about a hundred students are actually going to Mottlo while they're in high school and are in dual-credit, dual-enrollment, you know, that they, and we're gonna have students that never thought they could go to college, that are gonna come out of this and say, "You know, I can do that." So I, I can say the people here in this office and this community is really rallying around the students. the students, and it's nice to be a part of that. You know, and I thank you for your part, and some of you may be on that. Are you in the meeting tomorrow, too? I know you've been going, Mr. Young has been going to some of those, too.
I'll be at TSB.
Okay. He's been meeting with this same group and designing some of these programs also.
Appreciate that update, Mr. Odom. Number 11, general discussion. Before we get into this, I believe Mr. Cardy's got a presentation to make on Stewart's Creek High School.
This is a presentation for, that was sent to State School Board, Tennessee School Board Association, to enter Stewart's Creek High School into this contest issue. So, I just wanted you to see this and kind of get a good overall view of what the high school looked like now that we've got it open, we're standing back from it a little bit. This was submitted by Vincenzo Garcia, the architect. And there's all kind of facts in here. It's high school, 55 acres, 6,000 students, 450,000 square feet, which is 177 square feet per student. And this goes through and tells all about the air conditioning system and the microprocessor automation, the things that we've done for energy savings.
The geothermal is big, dude, with all of our students in there.
It is. And it's pretty interesting, at the end of this presentation, I want you to look at, there's also an award that's called People's Choice Award, and this has entered into that. Mr. Evans supposed to send out some info on that, and did a link to it, to all the people in the system to vote, and vote as often as you can. The total cost of this was over $39 million, that's $111 per square foot. And then again, this just goes through a lot of the energy-saving things, matched to the demographics and some of the educational programs that's offered. And this is very interesting. Through the school, those of school district do not seek LED certification, which is green building, many components such as geothermal heating/cooling, natural light, roofing components, energy management systems, high-efficiency lighting technology, green building components such as tile carpet, and four incorporated into the building. So we forewent the certification because it's so expensive and there's so many layers of bureaucrats in that now. Everybody's making a little money on it if you go through certification, so we have just forgotten about the certification on our building. This is the overall site plan with Stewart's Creek, middle and elementary in it. And this is the aerial view of that coming from the north. So you can see just the high school there. It's a very, very nice campus, very nice building. This just shows all the different components and where they are in the area. The red is CTE wing, and the green on the left is the main gym and auditorium. Same thing except floor plan, the upstairs are second-floor plan. Then this is a section cut through the building, pointing out some of the different locations and components. This is the main entrance of the school. Also, the main elevation on the front. And then this is the event entrance over by the gym. The courtyard, amphitheater. The media center, library. The auditorium. This auditorium, if you haven't been in there and looked around, you need to go in there. This is so impressive. There's, the components are there to do a very professional play or production, whatever you want to do. It's very, very talented. This is one of the CTE criminal justice, one mock courtroom set up in here.
Where the judge sits, right up there underneath that emblem.
I try to stay away from those. It's a TV station. The recording studio, that's in the CTE department. And then it goes through the color coding of the areas of the building, so the students can identify and learn where the things are in the building through the evening. One of the health sciences rooms, the auto technology room, that is an art studio, and the side, one of the science labs. And then you're into the gym. And then a stadium athletic complex outside. And that's it. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer.
You did some comparative analysis, do you want to share that a lot tonight with the cost per square foot? I think that's interesting.
I do. As I said earlier, the People's Choice Award, you should be seeing an email on that if you haven't already. And it gives you an opportunity, I think Stewart's Creek is one of eight buildings that was submitted throughout the state. And in that, Jeff gave a, if you notice there, a total description of the components. And so I went through today and just looked at the different square foot prices, because I wanted to see where we felt, or rated in the state of how we're, what kind of pricing we're getting, if it's good, excellent, or not good. So, the first school I looked at was in Jefferson City, and these were all submitted in this contest. Mount Cora Elementary School was $127.31 per square foot. We're at 111 on this. Bell Forest in Shelby County with $163.60, we're 111. And that 111 includes all of the geothermal metal roof, and all of the site and the stadium complex.
So, when you talk about elementary school, you're not really including the stadium complexes and all like this, there's not even an apples-to-apples, we're still lower.
Right. 127 without the complex.
You also talk about science labs, that can be quite expensive.
Reed County had a job that was, came in at 112 square feet. It was a high school, but I could not find a mention of the sports facility within that, so I would assume that it was done separately, at a separate cost. And then Brown Intermediate School in Squidwater was $135 per square foot. So we're anywhere from 50 to, you know, anywhere from $50 per square foot lower than most of the schools that are being built in the state of Tennessee. So please, go vote, tell everyone you know, go vote, and see if we can get the award.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy. I take it that'll be on the website?
Yes. Mr. Evans is working on that, so it'll be up in there. It'll be on the Twitter, the website, and then every employee in the system will receive an email with a link on it. Here, go vote.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, what we'll do is, in regards to any comments for our speakers, in regards to speakers, any board members want to address anything, or?
I think I would like to get a clarification from Mr. Reed. I know I'm putting you on the spot with no preparation, and you may not be able to give a full answer, but we were handed three different statutory regulations during the public comments. And just perusing through them, and of course, I'm gonna have conversations with Mr. and Ms. Moore and Ms. Archer, I'm sure, after all this. But according to 49-6-2207, it says that the commission will, I'm sorry, that was the wrong one. It was the 49-6-2202, that the state commission would pick a minimum of four textbooks for the different subject areas. And then it, then it says in the other one, that the local boards of education are authorized to select from those, from those lists. And then in 49-6-2206, it says that the only way that we would not be using from that list is to ask for a waiver through the commissioner for the unique or unusual needs of the school system. Are you familiar with that enough to comment, or do you need some time?
Well, I have not seen the statutes that you were giving tonight. I'm happy to look at those, though, and report back to the board. I would hesitate to make a comment on it without seeing the statutes you provided and the other statutory provisions around it, but I'm happy to do that and be, or plan to do that unless you want me to do something else. If I can report back to the board in that regard.
Just on my, just general observation, regulation is pretty tight, except for making an application to the commissioner for some unique need of the school system. So, the books that are selected by the commission were mandated to use otherwise. So, that's, that's the point I was wanting to get a clarification on, Mr. Reed.
Anybody else? Mr. Carter?
I want to congratulate those citizens who have taken the extra step and moved forward. You have certainly brought this situation to a very clear perspective. I agree with Mr. Blair. I'd like to hear the analysis of the code that we've been given from our board attorney, Mr. Reed, and I'm inclined to look into this further.
I did want to say, I want to commend you for all your work. I know that was very labor-intensive and took up a lot of time, and we challenged, well, I challenged you to do it, and you met the challenge, so thank you.
Mr. Odom, you have any comments?
There's a state board piece listed there, too, and I don't know when or how quick the state board will take it up, too, but I think that's one of the things that was listed in Tennessee Code. But anyway, Jeff can kind of tell us that, we just have to track it for a while and see what, where it goes.
I think the next step, if I understand, everybody, let's, let Mr. Reed review it. I will mention that, and I think the general public knows, we have a committee that basically reviews the books, and they make recommendations to us. So, you know, versus jumping over our committee, I think we, whatever Mr. Reed comes up with, we still have to go by what our committee recommends to us, and then we can go from there. Is that the way you perceive it, Mr. Odom?
Yeah, we haven't formed a committee yet, until you get the books and the list and that sort of thing. Typically, our chairperson is, is an elementary coordinator, and a middle school coordinator, and a high school coordinator. Typically, they, what they do is then form a committee from those people in the leadership role, and they sit down with the state's standards, and then they run an alignment with that textbook to see what standards are missing. Like I said before, you can't find any textbook that will cover all state standards. Typically, because textbooks are written generically across the country to match many state standards, so there'll be some missing, and there'll be some extra, and that sort of thing, but we wouldn't know until we run an alignment on each of these books, you know? Which one aligns more closely?
We got some rather specific requests this evening in the visitor comments, and I guess I would say, and I think it's already covered, but so that we specifically say back, Mr. Chairman, I think what you said is that at our next board meeting, that we would have an agenda item, that Mr. Reed would report back to us on our ability within the statutes that talk about these textbooks. I think that is the specific response to the specific request, so that we're clear on that. However, I also want to say that I was really struck by the difference between compliance with state standards and compliance with truth. And that was certainly highlighted tonight, and I appreciate the comment that was brought to the board.
You're correct, Mr. Carter. We will have a agenda item next meeting. Ms. Michaels, if you'll make notation of that. Mr. Reed, if you'll do your legwork and possibly give it to Mr. Odom and report back to us next meeting, we'll have an item on that. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Carter?
Other comments?
I'm fixing, I'm fixing the...
Okay, I'll let you lead.
Next item we've got, if we could, if we could work through this, I've got a letter of resignation from Mr. Tackett, and I'm sure, and I'll read it, and I'm sure I've got some, board members may want to make a few comments, and then Mr. Tackett requested last night to make a few comments and give us an update what his new job's gonna be. So, just bear with me just a minute, because I'll be forwarding this on to the county commission, and they'll be appointing somebody else to take Mr. Tackett. Due to my acceptance of the Rutherford County Schools athletic director position, I regret, regrettably, must tender my resignation from the Rutherford County School Board effective October 24, 2013. It has been a distinct privilege to work with you and other members of the board, current and past. Further, it has been my honor, honored to serve the citizens of Rutherford County for the past three years. I also wish to express my appreciation to Mr. Harry Gill and Mr. Don Odom, Directors of Schools, Board Secretary, Ms. Joyce Michaels, Board Attorney, Mr. Jeff Reed, and to the entire central office staff, truly the best in Tennessee. I very much enjoy the spirit of cooperation and camaraderie that I am confident will continue as I serve in my new position. I know you all will keep up the great work. With highest regards, Tim Tackett. Mr. Tackett, I'll start things off, and just, as I've mentioned last night, I appreciate all the, all the hard work you put together, but, within the board, but I really appreciate a lot of your guidance that you've given. In regards to the stuff that us, who aren't educators, you enlightened the situations a lot, a lot better a lot of times, some of the situations we get into, so I just want you to know I appreciate everything you did for the board, so. Mr. Blair?
It's a bittersweet moment for me, because I know you'll do an exceptional job. This position is right up your alley, Mr. Tackett, and you'll do exceptional with it as you have with everything else you've ever been involved in, in your life. And you've been such a treasure to this board, speaking very eloquently many times for us, and like Chairman Hodges said, with some background in education that many of us do not have. And I just want to continue to tell you how much you've been appreciated, how respected you are, and just so pleased that you're my friend, and just... that you are my friend, and just wish you the very best.
Mr. Carty?
The distinguished, uh, record that Tim Tackett has, uh, had here on board, highlighted by quotations in the Wall Street Journal advocating for, uh, for teachers in our system in the face of the teacher evaluation, uh, system coming in. And, uh, his perspective there was outstanding. His perspective is consistent and, uh, just is such a source of wisdom. The balance on the board, uh, is really impacted by your presence here, and I appreciate you greatly. Uh, in the spirit of Rutherford County moving from good to great, uh, it's only because this position is such a perfect fit, uh, and the greatness that, uh, that we anticipate and expect, uh, that we'll all be able to, uh, enjoy in you, with you in this position. I wish you all the best.
Mr. Nipper?
I just wanna say it's been an honor working with you on the board here. Uh, I know that we have an exceptional athletic program here in the county. You're gonna take it to greater heights. I am confident of that, and, uh, look forward to seeing what you can accomplish here. And just to let you know, we're all behind you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Tackett, I'd like to say, I'm probably the only one sitting here who's, hey, who's had the privilege of working under you as a teacher. When, and I know it's been, I've had the, the honor also of being my school board member with you. So, I know, I know what you can do, cause I've, I've seen you working as, as the principal. So, I know you're gonna have a wonderful time, and you're gonna represent Rutherford County very elegantly.
Mr. Young?
As I was saying, wish you the best, and we wish you the best.
All right, Mr. Tackett, why don't you give it?
Well, it, it's, it's bittersweet, I think, on my standpoint. Well, I, I, you know, when this opportunity came along, it was, uh, something I had to consider. People ask all the time, do you enjoy being on the board? I don't know if enjoy could ever be the right word for being a principal of the school, or sometimes even being a teacher, or whatever it happens to be. But, uh, it's rewarding. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I, I hope that it's known that my intentions have always been to do the best thing for the teachers and their students and parents. It can be difficult. Uh, as I say, the conversations with my wife are quite interesting, but she still sees things a lot more from a different perspective than I, than I do. And when you look at things on the broad scope, it can be difficult. I think when we look at this issue of the textbooks, as an example, sometimes things are handed down to us that we have to deal with the same way that it's handed down to you that, that, uh, out there as teachers or people on textbook committee or other, uh, uh, textbook, whatever it might be. Uh, decisions are made above you that you sometimes don't agree with, but you, you move on and make, try to make it work. Uh, but I appreciate Mr. Oldham giving me this opportunity. Uh, it, it is, it is maybe the only thing that I might've considered doing other, outside of what this is, because it, it legs, it certainly in my blood. I've got a coaching background, working with kids, and, and, and doing administrative work. And so, I'm looking forward to that, and I'll certainly be part of this, uh, this family in just a different kind of a way.
Mr. Tackett, do you, uh, would you like to give us, us and general public somewhat of a rundown of what you'll be doing?
Yeah, and I'll do it very briefly because I know people can get, this can be tiresome. But, uh, you know, the, the goal here will, will clearly be to, to try to provide, uh, an earpiece for folks in our system. I, I'm very much on site-based management. I think our principals and athletic directors and coaches need to be allowed to run the program. So, anybody that thinks I'm gonna try to come in and, and re-control some things, that's not my purpose at all. Uh, but to give them someone else they can talk to. I know how intimidating it can be sometimes to call T double S double A, and I'm not, I'm not against that at all. I'm not saying that. But if you've got a question on eligibility, you've got a question on schedule, you've got a question on this, that, and the other, sometimes that can be difficult thing. Hopefully, I can be that conduit to get them the right answer for that kinda thing. I can be in a position to make sure that eligibilities are, are clear and understood. I help with scheduling if, if asked to do so. I help with safety, uh, at, at the ballgames and so forth, if I'm asked to do so. And oversee those kinda things. And, uh, uh, as, as mentioned already, uh, we have a great program. The, the greatness of a program, folks, is not because we win state championships and, and we have teams like Blackman and Hope and ranked two or three in the state. Great was our program. The number of kids that participate. And, uh, that has grown and exploded. And I think one of the real areas that, that, that I'll try to be helpful in is at the middle school level, where it has exploded so much in the last ten years. You've typically got lots of young coaches that, that may not understand the process nearly as well. And they'll have somebody that they can, they can talk to and get with. My first-year volleyball coach, what'd I do next? And sometimes the principal doesn't know the answer to that question either. And maybe they can have somebody they can, they can come to and check with. So, uh, some things are in, in great, great shape and, and try to get that. I'm, my, my first mission is will be to try to talk with principals and athletic directors that beat to our programs, and let them input to me what they think I can do to help make their situations better. So, that's gotta be in a nutshell. Uh, it also encompasses charge schools, by the way, which, uh, we'll, we'll see how that runs itself. I made the comment, and I think, I don't know how much that will be, but, uh, it, it is, that is part of the job description, is to be the, to vote for point or, or accept applications and see that those things are handled in a proper way here at the central office level.
Mr. Oldham?
I, I think a lot of people do not realize, um, how much revenue and things are also associated with athletics in the six largest school district in the state of Tennessee. Um, and again, it's, the athletics is the hook that holds some students in school, that they receive their diploma. It's also a developmental tool that, that really rounds out many of the students, sometimes that are strong academically, that by their competing in athletics, participating, learning to be a team player, um, is also a huge factor. Another thing that I've talked to them about, and you're following some of this in the national news, you know, the whole thing of safety of students now, and, and, and we talk about concussions and all like this. And there's a lot of coaches, there's a lot of teams, a lot of things out there. And so, folks, to, to, to stay on the forefront of this and provide the best system we can for our people, we need somebody to, to head this up. He's part-time with this, so he's not gonna be able to do it all the time. But, but there are lots of things that we can accomplish and, and problems that we can possibly avoid, you know, by having someone to fulfill this position. So, I appreciate you stepping up, uh, to this opportunity and, uh, accepting the challenges that go with it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Carty, you get anything?
Since you asked. Contest of champions, uh, for, uh, some of our high school bands over at MTSU this weekend. Uh, Segal High School will perform their band, uh, program on Tuesday evening for a special community performance. And the Laverne High School are heading to Cordova, Tennessee, almost to Memphis. So, a lot of, uh, our high school musicians are in full force out there in the competition season, and the very best of them is they, uh, show what Rutherford County's about.
Mr. Chairman, MTSU Marshall tomorrow night blackout, so encourage everyone to attend. We need a good turnout.
We got Thursday night lights too.
Yeah.
Tell them, Mr. Nipper, what that one is.
Oh, that's the biggest one in the state this year, I think.
So, you, you got the Oakland and, uh, Blackman game tomorrow night also at Oakland.
And let us mention, uh, well, there's some, uh, connections. I know some of the referees are, are good friends of mine, and, uh, they'll do a great job. I can tell you that.
Anybody else?
Um, I do know that National FFA is going, our, our chapters are going to National FFA convention next week, so please, let's make sure they have a safe journey going up to Louisville and a safe journey coming back home on February Tuesday evening.
This board typically does not brag on itself, so I'll do that for you tonight. Uh, they have been designated, uh, as the Tennessee School Board of the Year for last year out of all the school systems in Tennessee. That's a, we're a little honored to receive that. A very, very competitive one. It's their involvement, their dedication, their extra hours that they put in and, and going to meetings and all to accomplish that. And since Mr. Tackett helped you do that, I hope-